We can try and answer them about as best we can. With the packet that.
Did you unmute the zoom?
Yeah, I unmuted me, it should be.
Okay, just making sure.
Nope, that's a good thing. We're gonna start with that. That was sent to you earlier and we're not gonna go through each one. I did wanna mention on the equipment revolving plan, the streets. Equipment revolving on just the. These sheets, the streets one is inaccurate, we had made a change right at the very end. With theirs and increased sixty thousand for repairs to the green building. And another fifty thousand for the um, snowboard. On that, so you'll see a little bit of change, it's right in the budget. Worksheets but it's wrong on these, the equipment revolving pages. So those, but these all you've seen before, the CIP and the. Local option, the hotel motel, you've already approved those. The tip one and the debt service report is included, uh, the transfers report that you've seen that as well. I'm gonna slide on down to the um, budget worksheet that are provided from. Um, our software. Down to the bottom here. Have done these individually so that we could just click on them. There's the start. So the budget worksheet and the function report, you should be able to take those dollars in the new budget and match them up to the actual state report. And it, this is kind of like the report what you guys see monthly on a monthly basis and. So this gives the, the budget for each of those lines within the public safety and each different department. And then there's the revenue report. That um. Shows the revenue, same way you should be able to match it up to the state. Sheets that are provided also in the packet at the end here. And it shows they'll match up, it should match up. Fill on the function report and then on page thirty two is the art fund, that's the revenue. That, that begins and um, shows what each. Fund will. Is estimated to receive. And we get through those and we come to the state reports. This is where we fill out the um, budget online and then these uh, reports are printed. So this is the certification page. That shows our um, valuations at the very top. Um, I will say. The valuations, they are talking about. There could be some changes, even on this fiscal year. Uh, we're really hoping not because there's some cities that have even gotten further than we have because they only have one meeting a month. And so. It, it, it's scary to think that there might be changes now, but um. This shows the different. The different levies that we levy and they're the typical ones that we um, have done in the past. And you come down to the, our city levy at the fourteen point six one four three five and that's the same as it was last year. The next page is the maximum property tax levy, this was the new. Requirement that um, legislators did to try and give the citizens. An opportunity. Another opportunity to see what we're levying and what those might look like. And then it compares to the previous year and how it would um. How much it's increased in order for us, even though our valuations have gone up. So because that. Percentage, the annual percentage change is seven point nine seven, anything over two percent, we have a, have to have a super majority for approval. And this one um, at our next meeting, the February thirteenth meeting, we'll set the public hearing for that and then we'll publish this in the paper. And um, then we'll hold the public hearing at the last meeting in February. Um, for approval for this, so that's when it'll come back and um, actually get approval, so. This is the highest it can be, if it, if it needs to go down or happens to go down, it can go, it can go less, but it cannot go higher. So those are the two main things. In the budget and. I'll take these. The, the other pages are obviously important, but those are the two. Main things that I really wanted to discuss. And then it shows you the fund balance. The reestimated pages. They don't do a whole lot with the reestimate just because of the crunch time that we have to. Get the budget done after valuations come out. It shows the expenditures. And again, it kind of groups it by the function report like I was showing you in our simple city reports. And tie them back in here. Same with the revenue. You could, should be able to tie in all of those. And then there's the summary. You'll see um, in the general fund, I mean, we, we don't like to see the negatives there. But the reason you're seeing the negatives is because if you go up a few lines where our transfers out. We're going to transfer four hundred and forty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars out of the general fund, out of our reserves. To, to do some of those projects, the, we're starting to save for a splash pad, so we're putting that. A little bit of money into that project fund and the other part of it is the S fourteen. Um, flyover, it's that, that will be our payment for twenty-four. So that was, that's what those transfers out are, is to cover those expenses. And the special revenue. It always looks a little wonky because local option is in special revenue and we transfer a lot of dollars out of local option. Those other departments, the equipment revolving and those kinds of things. And this one shows our long-term debt schedule and all the depth we have, we're doing um. A pre-levy for the field house, we're probably late spring. Do the bonding and um, prepare for that. For those um. Dollars that are pledged and the remaining that we need. As you can see that, uh, the bond will be about two point two million. And then, sorry for the pages, that's the way it prints off of the. Should have taken them out of there. And then this is just the public hearing notice, so that's our um. State forms, and now we'll jump into the, unless you have any questions, I'll stop for a minute and see if there's. Anything you have questions about or. Oh. And we'll go over um, to the. Presentation. Okay, um. As, again, if you have any questions as we go through, give us a holler. Oh, maybe it is, no, let me go. There it goes. So, the cash solvency, we have about thirty-three million in the bank. Um, not always expendable and, and much of it is restricted to its use like. The capital projects has money in it and things that are already earmarked for those dollars. We also have uh, the field house flyover, the splash pad housing, we have committed um, six million also for the new wastewater treatment. Facility out of our reserves. To help keep our rates down, that was really what helped keep our rates down the last time, so we're hoping that will help in the end as well. We manage and moni- monitor the financial situation, we assess our fees periodically to cover those expenses. We bid out items to receive the best price, um, we're doing a lot more in-house and uh, instead of contracting out. And we monitor our finances monthly, um, the council reviews our financial reports monthly. Showing the budget tax war reports and the city administrator and clerk um, review the. Bank re- reconciliations and line item reviews and. Department heads receive monthly reports, the same as you guys, so they're um, on top of their own budgets as well. And of course, we're also audited annually by the state. And the financial policies, um, the investment policy and purchase policy, debt and fund balance, those are all policies we've had in place for a while. But they give us a rule of thumb on. How much um, we have to keep in our fund balance and uh, our debt policy, what that is too. And the members of our finance team, um, obviously the elected officials and we try and listen to what. You guys um, are directing us to do and um, that we try and find the money and the projects to do it and. City staff, I, I have to give kudos to our department heads because they do um, an excellent job of. Being um, their line items. On track and really trying to stay um. Within what they had the, the previous year, you, they try and not increase anything unless they've got a specific. Thing coming up or um, replacement or know that there's gonna be repairs coming. And these are the plans that we use, um, the vision plan and the strategic plan, um, the department forms and the state forms. We also have um, the worksheets that were in the. Packet that we just talked about, the local option, the hotel motel. And those worksheets really help to define and crunch down those numbers, so we know, uh, those are really the most. Things you see changing over the course of a year or the bigger ticket items and the equipment revolving. Those plans. This is a um. Why that we put in that shows what the local option sales tax and where those dollars go for each department. There's been some talk at the legislation that they might change the way lost is done. And I guess I wanted everybody to kind of see where those dollars go, they, they help public safety, there's, there was a couple officers that. Were added and money was transferred from local option and. So there's a list of those things on there that we do and we use those dollars and if we don't have those dollars anymore, a little over a million dollars. We're gonna have to find another way to provide those services or. What will we do? Find the revenue to. Replace that if, if changes were made. Nevada, we're a fin- financially sound city, we um. Deliver services in the most effective manner, we've upgraded and. Our technology and software. To provide the community with easy access to the services we provide, we have a new website and online forums and um, we just. Are starting the new rec program online and um, working through that too. The budget timeline, it's a long process and we start. Really before August because we're always thinking about it, but um, that's when it. We really start with the worksheets and things. The city's on a fiscal year budget from July one to June thirty, um. We do base our budget on past history, trying to foresee any upcoming projects or changes. Um, it's difficult here in the last couple years with high inflation and. Trying to predict what's gonna happen next, so we've kind of taken the. Assumption that. We're gonna plan low and hope for low and. If, if we have to amend, then that's what we'll do. And then we'll know exactly where those, that amendment is. And the budget adoption, it's regulated by the state and gives us the authority to spend, we provide the services, products and programs in the most fiscal responsible way. And of course, the state sets the guidelines and mandates um, what we were, are required to do. This is showing the. Maximum property tax levy that was um, we were, I was talking about earlier on the state forms. That, that was the Senate File six thirty-four that required us to hold an additional hearing showing what those maximum property tax levies. We're gonna be um, trying to add transparency to our process. However, one thing about the maximum property tax levy is it doesn't include the debt service levy. Or the capital improvement um, levy. And so they're not really seeing the total levy yet, so I don't. I'm hoping that people realize when they see that, there's still a little more that comes on it. So the levy rates, um, we are maxed at the eight-ten levy. And all you, as you saw on the previous state forms, we levy for the civic center, the emergency levy, employee benefits, debt service levy and. Capital improvement levy. And it's a balancing act. Because we like to stay consistent year to year instead of having big fluctuations in. Um, residence tax bills, we feel like it's better to do. Even, even those years that it may be less for us, then we know. We get a little more maybe the next year, so it kind of evens out. And our revenues um, are up and down because obviously in October and April is generally when we see our highest revenue come in because of. People paying their property taxes, but yet our expenses are pretty constant month to month, so. Have to prepare for that. The rollback um, means property's not taxed, it's full value and the state um. Has a method they use to figure the rollback amount for each year. And I think that's kind of what happened this year was. With the multi-residential. Being combined with the residential. It, it did something they weren't expecting, so it made the. It increased the rollback, so it was more valuation that would be taxed to the residents, so. I think that's what they're looking at to see about trying to. I don't know, do something different, it's just scary when we've already started this process.
The week's trying to get them to implement it for the next cycle, so the city's gonna have to scramble and redo, the work already been done in this cycle. But, this, this was a, a bill that they filed because there was an oops, but they didn't realize it would affect the rollback.
So this slide shows the property valuations by classification. And it gives you, the bold is the. A hundred percent valuation and then the lighter uh. Bar is the actual taxable valuation per um, classification, residential, commercial, industrial. Railroad and gas and electric. So it kind of shows you how the rollback affects those different classes. And my little notes there um, kind of talk about the changes that have happened in the last even ten years. Um, because uh, commercial and industrial before twenty thirteen was taxed. At, at a hundred percent of their valuation, so they've slowly just started to um, do some things. With the, those in particular, commercial and industrial. And then in twenty twenty-two, there were two new ones, the elderly tax credit for seniors. Um, and they have to qualify, there's a formula that they have to qualify for that, but then they'll get a tax credit. And that will come off of their taxes and. Typically, when they've done things like that, they've given us a backfill and there will be no backfill for that, which might not be. Huge, but um, the other change they made was the um, business property tax credit. They are basically taking that away. Commercial and industrial used to be able to file an application. To receive this business property tax credit. And I, I'm not sure what the application looks like or what the qualifications were for those businesses. But then they could get a credit on their taxes that would come off kind of like homestead credit does for residential. And so they'd get that credit and then the state would turn around and give that credit that they gave those commercial and industrial. They would give us money back in our um, dispersment. Called the, and, under the business property tax credit, but, well, they're taking that away and making it. So that every business in, in industrial, on the first hundred and fifty thousand dollars of their valuation. The rollback will be, instead of their typical ninety percent, will be the same as whatever the residential is for that year. So in this year, it's fifty-six point four nine one nine, I think. So the first hundred and fifty thousand valuation will be rolled back to fifty-six percent rather than ninety percent. And that will be for all valuations and then anything above. The hundred and fifty thousand will be, will go back to the ninety percent. So. And then, they're s- they're saying they're going to give us. Um, backfill. For. Those dollars. But when I looked up the twenty-two. Um. Typed it down, when I looked up the twenty-two. Backfill that we received in our dispersment, it was like a hundred and twenty-five, I thought I wrote it down, but I don't have it here on my sheet, of course. Hundred and twenty-five thousand and we're only, it, and then Ted sent out, Ted at the Department of Management sent us um, a. Spreadsheet tool that we could use to try and calculate and of course, they use the valuations and everything and we had to plug all of that in. And it looks like from that tool. Will be receiving less. So we won't get the. Total that we wish to get, we'll see less dollars. So. Who knows how it will play out? This shows the taxable value, um. And what percentage each uh, classification contributes to that, our total. Um, value and taxable valuation. Residential is sixty-seven percent of our taxable valuation. So, they are our biggest. And uh. It shows the history of the residential rollback and where it's been. And it shows the property tax dollars based on a hundred thousand dollar property. And how it's um, how it fluctuates a little bit because of the rollback. And then again, this shows an assessed value for a residential property of a hundred thousand. Shows the rollback at the fifty-six point four nine one nine and what um, their taxable valuation would be the fifty-six four nine two. And then times our levy rate and that shows how we get to the eight hundred and twenty-five dollars and fifty-nine cents. Then that eight hundred and twenty-five dollars and fifty-nine cents, this shows. How each levy, how much money each levy that we have on that certification page. Um, where each of those dollars go. And then we have the previous years as a. Example. So here is the um, my best guess, I'll say, because I've seen a couple different ways that. They are figuring this, but from the explanation we got at the budget workshop, I think this is the way it is, but I've seen a Department of Revenue. How they're telling the auditors to figure it and it's not like this, so. This is my best guess. But it's showing the first hundred and fifty thousand will be at the fifty-six point four nine one nine and then the rest of it, if it's a two hundred thousand dollar. Um, valuation, the re- the rest, remaining fifty thousand will be at the ninety percent, add those two together. Then it will be at our city levy rate and that would be the. Total city property tax revenue. This shows the tax rates of, um, this is for the year we're in fiscal twenty-three because obviously we don't know twenty-four. But it shows the city school, county and other. And how it gets to that thirty-six um, point zero zero three five three for the um. Total levy rate and it shows previous years. And this shows how it's divided out um, between. The county and city school. This is a slide of the general fund only, the general fund expenditures and where those um, expenditures go. Or come from, the highest expenditures um, between public safety and uh. Cultural and rec, which obviously includes library and park and rec and cemetery and. Um. Projected fieldhouse too, so those would all be under uh, cultural and rec. And the trans- transfers out are the ones that I already mentioned about earlier. And then this shows the general fund revenue sources and as you can see, the majority of our um. Revenue is property taxes and then the next one down is the transfers in, which would be the loss that we talked about. Um, loss coming in to the general to help pay for some of those um, services that we provide. And also those um, levies that we do, the emergency levy gets transferred in and uh, the. Benefits levy gets transferred in to pay for those benefits. This shows um, our tax rates comparable to other cities our size. And we're still up um. For the top, I think we've been about that spot for the last few years. There were a lot of changes in the population, that was interesting to update that after the census. Then this again shows the general fund and those items that are in the general fund and the services we provide, the public safety and the library, the parks, rec. Cemetery administration. Um, planning and zoning is there too. And um, building inspection. This slide shows what we actually budget. And then what is actually take, what actually happens in the second line of each fiscal year. And typically, we do try and budget a little bit for um. Have a little bit in reserve. Because we don't know what kind of expenses are gonna come up in emergencies and that kind of thing. And this shows the non-activity revenue sources, basically they're not. Um, fees or anything like that and it shows um, the difference from this year to next fiscal year. And where those uh, monies are coming from. And that, these slides will show the departments and. How they've um, changed from prior years. And I will say a common theme amongst all of them is mostly the. Wages and benefits, uh, fuel, insurance and utilities, it's a common theme throughout. All the departments and as I said before, the, the other things are. Mostly capital that change depending on what they're gonna buy that year for equipment, um. And those kinds of things, but. Other than that. They're all pretty much the same. Um. Some of them have a few, like the contractual for uh, PD is some of those services that. Are with the car cameras and those kinds of things that we have to have. The computers and. There's the fire. That looks so high just because of the smaller number. But like I said, the same thing, um. Is this down a little bit, but he's just one person and some of that, because we're comparing. Last year, the actual budget, we're not really comparing last year's. Last year, the actual budget, we're not really comparing last year's. We don't know the full actual, so it's budget to budget and last year. If you remember, we were trying to budget after a wage study and just it. It's been an experience, to say the least, so. And not knowing what's gonna happen with cost of living too. But as Jordan and I had a conversation earlier about. We've seen some crazy numbers out there for other cities and what they're budgeting and we have not taken that approach. Or we're being conservative and if we need to do something different later, then that we'll look at it then. The library um theirs did go up a lot because um she has requested another staff member. So they are, we are budgeting for an additional staff member for them. They're having some. It's just needed, I'll say. So that's that's a lot of bears. There's the park and um fourplex and pool and then on the next slide. Is where the field house, I put the field house and the recreation together. Just because we kind of, when. Tim and I were working on his budget, just trying to figure out where everything was gonna go and how we were gonna make it look. Thought it was easier to to see it here and obviously um. We're doing our best guess for the field house, not knowing what it will look like, what those expenses will actually be. Planning for additional programming and those kinds of things. There's the cemetery. Administration. And the streets. This is where you'll see his capital increased. And the water is um. Mostly personnel and the um increase there. And here again is the wastewater and it's um the anticipation of the new plant and the costs uh expected for. For those and what those will look like. Kind of like the field house, doing our best. Yes, with those um Harold did have Mike Roth give a try and do a. An idea, an assumption for what the utilities might be, so. We did try and base it off of some of those things and the contracts that were gonna be needed. So that concludes the presentation. Is there any questions or something you'd like to see further or ideas or? Thoughts for next year, if you'd like to like it to be shorter or longer or see something else or. Any thoughts you ever have, please send them our way, cause.
My thought is it's very complete and I appreciate it.
And I was curious too to compare this year, the total revenues to two years ago. Cause I know last year was a dip here, just cause I know that 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 seven point some percent. Which I know it's probably less than inflation was for the year, but I was curious what that would look like compared if you took last year out. Cause I think that gives us a better.
See what it looks like compared to that FY twenty two is what you're asking, right?
Yes.
Sure to go back to.
The last, I'm sorry. Well, the last few years, we have, we have not had more than two percent. We have been and most cities.
Because we like to be under that and I know.
We have, we have been under that two percent fresh threshold, so um I'll just do some figuring with that. And shoot you guys out some numbers to show you.
Didn't want to add to everybody's inflationary pressure, but it's good to have that data.
I think there's a lot of communities that are. Really kind of inflating it a little bit to provide that little cushion.
Yeah, I know it's a macro we're talking about.
Yeah, and and Karen does a really good job of. Doing a conservative budget and making sure everything because of. In my in in my experience, I've inflated a budget and. That's what the department heads see and they're like, oh, well, I have that much money in in here, so you know, so um. So I I think Karen does a really good job of keeping things actual and trying to keep us as low as we possibly can.
I was gonna ask if there's any way for us to see. But it would be uh for us if we were to increase, I'm just looking at total tax rates, that chart that you showed us.
I'm having a terrible time hearing you, I'm sorry.
So the chart you showed us with the total tax rates from all these other cities that are similar population. Yeah, we've got one that's at thirteen point eight percent. And then you have the high at almost eighteen percent. What would our revenue or what would our. Funding look like if we were to either reduce or go up? What I was kind of curious to see.
Karen and I did talk about reducing the overall levy and we. Kind of afraid to do that because we're not really sure what the state and some of the things that are going to be changing in the next couple of years and. Uh we know that there's going to be increases, so that's one of the reasons why we didn't do that uh so. I think you'll you'll see a nice decrease, obviously, if you do that, but I don't think it's realistic long term.
But it would look like if we were to decrease it, what it would look, what would it look like if we were to increase it? Say to like sixteen percent. We'd still be.
Well, if if you look at the cert page from the state. State um. It shows the different levies we have, right? And really the only thing we could increase. Right now, to make our if and if our rate was to increase would be our debt service levy. Because we are really at the max, we're at the max for the civic center. Because it has a point one three five max. The only thing that is not, does not have a max is the liability and self-insurance. And that one, we plug in um what we paid last year. And this year, that's what we typically do. But this year, with Melissa telling me that increases were gonna be anywhere from twenty to twenty five percent again. Um she did a spreadsheet for me and so we kind of based it on that and um hope we're close. And we used to have the memorial building, right, for Gates Hall. So that would have been an additional levy, but we don't have that anymore and it's a voted levy. So it's not something we can just add, it would have to go back to a vote of the people. And then the the other ones that are non-voters is the emergency levy. And we're actually at the two seven max with that's on our certification page. And then um the only other thing is we do fluctuate that the benefits amounts. To keep our levy rate. At the fourteen six one four three five. Used to be what the eight six one eight, but last year there the maximum property tax levy. I made an error on, I used the wrong column, so it can't be any higher, so it had to be reduced just slightly. So I just stayed with what we had last year. But that is really the only place we could increase is is there. If, does that make sense and does that answer your question?
So are so are you saying the other cities that have a higher total tax rate have had a?
Other cities could have different.
Put it in front of the.
Levees, they could have.
They could have. Memorial Hall levy or a completely different trail levy.
Well, in the reality of if we're really trying to attract people in business, we wanna be right where we're at. We don't wanna be higher.
Part of that, why, so part of it was, you know, we stuck that levy rate. Flat and the goal of we wanted to hold the line and hope that with the industrial growth, we're saying that as those. Um as all those development agreements wash out, but then we'd be able to bring that levy down for residential. So obviously, the big ones are still out there, Burke and others, we haven't seen those off yet. But the end goal is to bring the levy down.
And it might be able to happen when Burke comes on, to be honest. But that won't happen for, this is the first year of Burke, so it'll happen for ten years.
It it is true, we do have a lot of things coming online. Within ten years and that's really going to help us.
Don't do something.
But the beautiful thing is though. Thing when we talk about the legislature is Karen went over the changes they've made. We've been able to grow through that and that's an advantage that a lot of cities haven't had. So luckily, we've been able to absorb those changes. And still provide the level of service that people want, not have to increase the rates. But the one thing you wanna be cognizant of is, you know, we don't wanna be one of the cities that say, well, we haven't increased our rates. And have significant valuation swings or we're just trying to hide tax increases that way. So that's why I was asking the question to go back two years, because last year was a low operation, so we can see what that looks like. Because then we can say, well, actually, compared to previous, it's only a change of X, just so that we know what the true dollars are.
Well, and good planning here for the capital improvements. We've got amazing capital improvements and staying level. So that's that's good planning.
We have some time, if there's something else that you think of or. Like to see, let me know.
Nelson, we can close our workshop.
Yep, close it up.